All right, I'm going to call the support meeting to work. I want all of you to join me with the plan.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am from the United States of America. And to the required worship fans, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can you see it again? The whole comments not have to be there. Okay. All right, are there any other changes?
Someone says. What I just can't hear. All right, we're just testing it again. All right, just making sure that everybody can hear. Please let us know how things are going. Are you still on the microphone? All right, are we still in the microphone? Is that better or is that worse?
Yeah. All right.
All right, one more try. Is that better or is that worse?
Horrible.
All right, one more try. Any better or worse?
I think you're muted on your computer. Something's better. Alicia, it says you're not muted.
I'm trying to hear you.
Okay.
So, one thing.
Yeah.
If I'm speaking. I can speak to anyone speaking.
Yeah, that would, that would probably have to be the.
He first wants me to just press the bar. And to get the microphone.
All right, I had somebody say better. And I had somebody say next mic is best. Are you, are you guys hearing me now? Is it working? Okay, so everyone, so people can hear now through this and there's no feedback. Right now, you should be the only one that I can hear. Okay, so you're not going to hear the school board right now. Right now, it's just run through a microphone. So if we can hear everybody here and we're okay, we can continue with the microphones as is. A lot better than it was, okay. Make sure that you're.
Um, speech. All right.
So we'll hand the microphone off to Ruben. We'll have him start and we'll address if we need to.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for joining. For attending. We're going to go over a few items. Some items that you've had in the past and have done the work. On the work.
It gets bad. It's not the mic, it's this. They're, they're picking up on my computer. They're not picking up on the mic. So when they're, when they listen to the mic, they can't hear it. They can hear through the computer. So that our, our audio isn't properly picking up whether we Bluetooth into Zoom or we take it out of Bluetooth and just use the microphone. You're gonna have to speak through your computer. Okay. I'm gonna face, I'm gonna face this way, okay? Is there an echo now? Great, okay. So, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Tonight's superintendent's report, I'm going to cover a broad area. We have a lot to talk about. I'll try to be as succinct as possible. There's a lot of information, certainly if you want to read through the presentation, I encourage you to go on to the website and be able to go to the agenda, click on the 17th. And in the superintendent's report, there's a slideshow, has a lot of slides in it. I'm not going to go through every single slide because it will take us a long time. But I'll try to, what I'm going to attempt to do is to thread the different concepts all the way through this presentation. So lots going on in the Jaffrey Ridge Cooperative School District. Lots going on in the region and throughout the entire state and nation for certain. So there's not a day that goes by that something hasn't significantly changed. Knowing that, we have to keep on working on our current plans and to improve upon them and to get them more precise and so forth. But also, at the same time, we have to continue to not forget the work that we've done already. And the work that we have indicated that we are going to do so that we keep things going that we have started and also proceed with many of the plans that we are currently working on and making as a school district. So, in this presentation, four items. Basically, last year, we had a safety MOU that was between memorandum of understanding. That was between the JREA, which is the Teachers Association here in the Jaffrey Ridge Cooperative School District and the school board. And we just want to talk about progress that has been made on that and some next steps. A technology plan update. We've been working on several things throughout the course of years. One is trying to get a facilities plan together. We're inching closer and closer as we get more data from architectural work and engineering studies and so forth. Also, technology, you know, similar in fashion. We need to continue to make sure that that's, that's such a major issue or a major area of our strategic plan or strategic design. We need to make sure that's, that we're planning for the future and making sure that what we do right now is in good order, too. The strategic plan, there's a difference between a strategic plan and a strategic design. I'll explain that a little bit. And then, of course, the reopening framework update because we had some next steps on our, our August 3rd statement. And so, what have we done? What do we need to do? Are there other things we need to consider? And so that's what this presentation here is tonight. So, a year ago, a little over, a couple of years ago, really, we negotiated a three-year contract and was passed by the voters. And the voters in 2019 passed this three-year contract with the JREA. And at the end of this contract, there was an addendum. And so it talked about getting some individuals together to talk about safety issues that were in the school district. Safety, of course, has been the number one goal of the school board in the last several years. And so that and then education. And so, a group met, and if we can continue on to the next slide. The safety MOU, you can read right here. You can go back to it in the slides. I'm not going to spend the time to read everything. But basically, it has a timetable and wanting to make sure that we're collaboratively working on improving systems in the district in order to improve safety. These were individuals right here who were on that, who served on that committee. And that was in September of 2019. And then the school board heard the findings in December of 2019. And the four categories being emotional well-being, physical safety, building concerns, which is more like a facilities concern, and grounds concerns. So there are approximately 30 recommendations. Some of, you know, there are maybe a few less than that, but there were some that had multiple parts to it. So about 30 recommendations. And what I really wanted to do was just kind of highlight some of what we've done and then also some things that we need to continue doing or some things that are actually in the works right now. So in March of 2019, we started to work on really making sure that our professional development was in a place that was supportive of the mental health well-being of our students and our teachers as well. So in the March, the two March professional development days in the JREA contract, there are two days that we joint plan. And so the joint planning was focused on really making certain that that the mental health was going to be a focus. Mental health, also how to deal with behaviors that are more extreme. How to, you know, social, emotional curriculums and so forth. And so this slide talks about what went on during those two days. And we had Cassie Yakley, who's been around the entire state and certainly in other states as well, talking about trauma in our students. She worked with the entire school district for four hours and then did another two-hour presentation afterwards. We talked, we had groups from Antioch coming in, talking about secondary trauma. Secondary trauma being what takes place to those who are helping service individuals who have experienced trauma. We all have that effect. How do we take care of ourselves? Mental health first aid and so forth. There were some physical structures that we have been working on as well. July 1st, we did hire a district safety coordinator. So this was an effort that we had researched and studied and said, what's the best approach to looking and helping support safety in all of our schools across the district? And do that in a fiscally responsible way at the same time. And so we're very pleased to have Louis Chetel here. He's been here since July 1st, 2020. He's really taken hold of a lot of the safety concerns. Certainly, he's going to be helping with active shooter training and all those types of drills that we have and working with the community to make certain that we are doing better and better in a collaborative way with our community to practice our safety and from the standpoint of emergencies. But we are also looking at safety even right now with things like making sure that we have outdoor learning opportunities and the structures that are going to be needed in order to make sure that environment is set up. Building security, certainly. You know, we all have these items right here that are called FOBs. And then some of us have, or many of us eventually have these that we get when our pictures are taken. Why not have those systems available right here and just do them, putting them all together to make sure that we have our IDs? We all wear our IDs and that ID lets us into the buildings as well. So things like that, that are smart, efficient, works in progress, that make things safer. Building security. You know, looking at, there were concerns that were brought up in the safety committee about locks between rooms. So a lot of rooms go in a line and there are doors that go from room to room to room to room, making sure that we have the ability to lock, unlock, things of that nature. So that work is being looked at. And it has been looked at for quite a while, but we've had some, you know, change in personnel. And so we have to relook at some items, looking at shades and so forth for the windows that are good and, and fire-rated and so forth. So in case of a situation where there's an active shooter or a perpetrator or anything of that nature. One of the suggestions was to make certain that we had some coverage in our front office after school hours. For instance, over the years, we've seen that, yes, we, we focus very heavily on safety during the school day. And I think we were continuing to do a better and better job with that. But then, all right, we have students after school and especially recently where we've been really focusing on students' mental health and well-being and getting them active in sports and, and other clubs and so forth. Making certain that we have our buildings secure during that timeframe as well and the ability to reach our students if necessary is really important. So a first step is that we've been able to secure some kind of staggered hours for staff to be able to be in the high school, middle school office area until 4:30. So that's a big start for us, a big change, and that's really great. There were concerns about roofs, leaking roofs and the, the health and safety issues that that brings along with it. And so we did this past spring, early summer. We were able to finish the Jaffrey Middle School roof, the flat roof there. Did a lot of work on that. It's all brand new. And the RMS gym roof as well. There were concerns that there weren't phones in, in really key places of the facilities. So we have a two-year plan this year, working on the middle school, high school phone system. One, modernizing it, making sure that we have better capability of making, you know, putting the intercoms in the right places, but also that we have more reliable phone service, but also so that we have phones that are put into places like the cafeteria that did not have a phone. And that's an important place to be able to, to be able to pick up a phone and call for some support. Certainly, we have walkie-talkies and we've always had the ability to communicate, but this is a more permanent way of doing that. So that's ongoing right now. Next year, we plan to put in the budget to make sure that the two elementary schools are done as well. Parking is something that we've talked about as a school board and administration for many years, and I'm sure well before my time as well. And that these parking areas provide some reason to, you know, fix them and, and improve upon them, not just the actual surface themselves, but the way traffic is routed. And so currently, there's some work. Our safety coordinator is actually working with our facilities manager to change some things over at Jaffrey Grade School to make sure that vehicles can't go through and use, go from school spring to Charloon Street or Charloon Street to, to school street. You know, back and forth like that, zipping through that way. We wanted to make sure that that's a safe passage by not making it a passage. And so we'll be putting some barriers in there that will be helpful. And of course, we will be looking at and also making sure potholes and so forth are filled. We did pass a $200,000 last year as a warrant article in March to be able to put forward or to put toward improvements in parking. But still, we have not yet identified exactly where we're going to utilize those funds. RMS, the same thing. RMS, maybe the parking lot itself has a few less bumps in it, but it is, anyone who goes there knows there's a lot of traffic with cars. Parking is tough. And you have the school buses that go around. So everything's happening at the same time. And so that proposed, that poses a safety issue. So we are in a current, we're currently working to finalize an agreement, a contract with an individual forester to be able to help with the RMS land that is adjacent to the current parking lot and seeing if we can enlarge our ability to or improve our ability to make parking that is safe and to better help our traffic flow. Also, the district looked at, I mean, there's a wide array of plant issues or physical plant issues that were brought up, like bathrooms and staff bathrooms and, and all of that. So we have just awarded to the Turner Group the bid for architectural and engineering work. And so that work's going to be starting, I think, relatively soon. Obviously, that's, that's a planning process, but that will give us the opportunity to see what we want to do for our next steps to improve our, to continue to improve our facilities. Some next steps that we have, you know, we need to finalize the tree management agreement. That's an important one for Ringe. Get the recommendations from the Turner Group. That's going to take a little bit of time, but you know, that they certainly need to have time to do their work. Budget for the RMS and JGS phone systems. Continue to tighten up access to our facilities to be able to make sure that people aren't inadvertently or even purposely propping doors open, leaving them open during the day. We've done a lot better with that, I think, in all schools. People have done a really nice job stepping up. That installing the gate at the front of the JGS entrance from school street. That's a little bit of what I was talking about with what Lou Chetel is working on right now. And a, a large, one that kind of covers a lot of the concerns from the social, emotional is just making sure that we have a couple of things. One, that we're in our strategic planning going forward, that we make certain that across the entire district, we have a multi-tiered system of support. And what that means is that we have kind of planned different processes to help students who have different sorts of needs. So you, you would do that for academics. You would do that for behavior and social, emotional as well. And then, of course, having a social, emotional curriculum. Some of what we did in that March PD was looking at one of the social, emotional curriculums that's out there that's fairly popular is Choose Love. And so that's not something we've chosen as a district, but it's an example of us looking at some of these social, emotional curriculums. Certainly, our elementary school counselors have done a good job. And I think to some extent, the middle school and high school as well. But certainly at the elementary, they have a lot more evidence of, you know, continuous work with a social, emotional curriculum that they may have built themselves. But having that district-wide is really important. The, well, why don't we do this in chunks? Do, does anyone have any, from the board, does anyone have any questions or thoughts on this specific area? Or would you like me to go through and we just wait till afterwards? Just continue? Okay. Okay. So the technology plan, this is a long part of the presentation and we will be skipping through several of these slides. Again, go back and look at them because they're all, you'll see the word draft up there. They're all in draft. Leslie McLean, who works with me in the office and I and Mike have been, Mike, who is a technology manager, have really been looking at our technology from a much broader and perhaps deeper way than what we have been done in the past. So our strategic design talks about having the right technology for the right purposes and all of that. But they're actually, rather, we can get Chromebooks, right? We have one-to-one Chromebooks, that's fine. We can get, we can get more Chromebooks. That's a relatively easy thing to do. We have Wi-Fi adequate enough for that within the building. We're making sure that Wi-Fi is going outside the building as well. You know, that's a relatively simple thing to do. But to really guarantee that our systems are safe and secure and will allow us to keep on moving more this direction in the future, we have to do some deeper planning. So some of that is, is here. What do we, it talks about, these slides talk about what do we have right now? And where do we want to be going toward? So if you can continue on with this. There's a, these are draft mission statements and vision statements. They're not anything that has been adopted by any stretch of the imagination. They are, the concepts in them were directly taken from the strategic design that was adopted December of 2017. We talk about technology and curriculum and the current state there. You know, we have, we have technology and various aspects of our curriculum. For instance, we just adopted a math program in K through five, CERN, and that has a very large technology base to it. Actually, that was just done. And I don't even think I have it in this document as something that, that I would, I would have to add that to this. And along with that, a curriculum-based software would be something like MobiMax. MobiMax was a program that was used largely during some remote learning. This year, we'll be utilizing, but also throughout the summertime. And we updated people with the students who had been working on MobiMax during the summertime and some, you know, rewards that they had gained from local organizations and the community that donated. Yep. The next two slides are just matrices of what types of software are at the different grade schools or the different schools in general and at the SAU. So we can go through those two slides. The next one. And then we talk about, again, the future additions to the curriculum work that we need to do. And if you read through that, honestly, anyone who is, is viewing this and has ideas like, hey, we're missing something from this and want to let us know that that this is a, a need in the area of a specific area of curriculum, by all means, please make certain that you let us know. And then we talk about technology for students. And we can continue. It follows the framework of just, here's what we have right now. Here's what we want to do for the future. And if you continue through, here's what we have right now, the current state. And here's what we're going to do for the future. So if we go back to, to the end of the technology section, because this is going to be repetitious, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. It's just that there's been some work done, but at the last board meeting, I believe it was the last board meeting, the board, the school board allowed for a transfer to take place, to put money into an account so that we could have the ADAM group come out of Portsmouth to be able to do an audit of our entire technology system in our district, largely having to do with our safety and our practices and whether our firewalls are secure and so forth. So first, before we do anything about innovation, we would just want to make sure that we have the adequate technology that we have, that, and that, that we need in any way to go forward. Okay?
So do you want to pause and take questions if anyone had any for technology?
Let's just keep on going? Yep. Sure. So the question was about adopting a piece of technology for curriculum. So the processes that we've taken as of late. Have been better than what we've been perhaps done in the past. Sometimes, schools have chosen some technology and have. Added them. It's been free. It usually starts off with freeware and then kind of seeing if we can add some to the budget. So a lot of it has been talked about through adding it through the budget process. A better way is to do what. Our elementary schools did this past year with both Zern. And with Mobi Max and really doing a study as to what are the best. Sources or the best tools in order to. In order to. You know, in order to find out what we want to be purchasing and of course, bring it to the school board first to be able to. Let them know this is what we're looking for. Here's the process we take and then get their their approval. That's where our policies are and that's what we need to do. But more important than policy is also the idea that it was such a thorough process. So often, for instance, I've had a. School. Or maybe a department in the past that's asked for, we want new textbooks. Well, very few people, very few schools, for instance, are really going out and purchasing new textbooks because they become obsolete so quickly. So my response is. I mean, yes, if you if you had a new textbook, you actually by policy have to have a whole committee and go through an entire process and all that. But why would you do that? Why don't you look for what's the alternative? What's the technology alternative to that textbook? Is there an ebook? Is there a software that continuously updates as it goes along, you know, with a with a subscription? So those sorts of things, we want to be able to purchase as opposed to just simply. A book that's going to be on, that's going to be used for a couple of years and say, oh, we need to get it, we need to spend another ten to fifteen thousand on another series of textbooks. So. Like adoption of a textbook. We would want to do the exact same process, form a committee, look at. The research on those items. Be able to make certain that it is exactly what we want and that it is aligned with our strategic design. And the practices that we want within our district. And then we would put that forth to the school board. And explain why it is we want that. And then, of course, it gets into the budget process. So the question is, is that a process we're going through retroactively? That is certainly not a process that we are right now. Going to be entering because we don't have the time to do that. But there, I think to the point, maybe a smaller version of that is looking at doing an audit, looking at all the. Software that we do have, see if there's redundancy, see if we're utilizing, for instance, if we have Mobi Max. And that's supposed to be really the best. Tool, what other tools mimic even portions of Mobi Max that we might be able to. Reduce or end. And so that's something that we can do without as much of a process. I have a question from, those questions were from Laurel. I have a question that is from John McCarthy.
So Ruben, one of the exciting things that I think. You accomplished or the district accomplished this. Year was to review the learning management system opportunities and make a selection. And I think that's kind of exciting. Because it's a culmination of quite a few years of preparing for that. Is that right?
Yes, in two thousand seventeen, so what John's was more of a statement. He indicated it was about the learning management system in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, when the strategic design was adopted. Some of that design was talking about getting, you know, the importance of technology and getting a very good learning management system that would allow the flow of. Curriculum instruction and assessment. To occur so much better and to be able to get to the point of personalizing learning for kids. In a way that was manageable for adults. Because personalizing is what we've always wanted to do and we always strive to do and we and we do a very good job of it. But to do it consistently and constantly as an entire unit, as an entire system, that is very difficult to do. K through twelve or pre-K through twelve. So, yes, the work that was done by the committee to adopt Otis. Otis, which currently is is getting closer and closer to being able to be. To get some professional development on it and maybe even begin to use. Curriculum. Rubrics and so forth have been put into them. There are like six or seven big data sets that have to be uploaded into this learning management system. That Adele is working on religiously. It's just they're very big files and the accuracy of them is really important to get. So. Doing it right the first time is going to pay off. And so we continue to work on that as we speak. So that segues into the strategic plan. This basically the, again, the strategic design, this is a graph that really is meant to summarize the idea of the strategic. Design where we have nine visions for different things, structures, assessment, instruction, curriculum, learning. And that we want all our students to thrive in their lives and communities. And we'll do that by engaging them, empowering them. And we want to. By, in order to do that, it's nice to have the philosophy. It's nice to have the outcomes that were developed. It's nice to have the guiding principles. But it is not a full-blown plan. And so the plan. Has to be based upon the strategic design, not just aligned, but really. The has to, the plan has to live and breathe the the elements of the design. And so. The planning is going on. As we speak, again. It's important that as we think about even current plans. That we were able to look at what we wanted to be doing in the future and see if there was any of that that we could. Help implement during this timeframe as well. And so the the next slide just shows, you know, an idea of another part of that strategic design. Next slide. Is this a slide that talks about here, the SAU? The SAU doesn't really get talked about much when we come to the strategic design. Yet the SAU is the support to the entire system. So this is just a work in progress to show that. The SAU is indeed working on their portion of that while the schools are doing their their portion of their strategic planning as well. And the current planning that we're doing aligns with what is going on with the strategic design and the future planning. So that brings us all of that from before. Brings us to this area of the reopening framework update and next steps. So. Last school board meeting, August third, two thousand twenty. The next steps were to obtain accurate data regarding schooling needs, transportation needs, food needs. Some special ed information that we needed to have. It all in order to make certain that we fall, we could follow the framework, which gave. Class size limits, ten to fourteen in elementary school and between fifteen and eighteen and in middle high school. So that in the building. Proper social distancing could take place. We define social distancing as at least six feet. Of distance between one person and another. So in order to do that, in order to find out how staff are going to be utilized. How, you know, what sections we were going to be need to be run, whether we needed to have more remote learning options or we had to find out from people. What exactly they were looking for. And so teacher has filled out a commitment form. Sorry, not teachers, the community parents filled out commitment forms for each of their children. Those who we did not have forms from, the offices have been. Calling and getting that information so that we added to the information we had so we can make the best plans. So that was done. In order to, if we go to the third little circle there, development of school and class schedules. So that is ongoing right now. I can say that, given the numbers that we have commitment wise. We are able to meet thresholds in the. Framework in the both elementary schools and in the middle high school. There's certainly a lot of tweaking that has to take place, especially with the middle high school. Due to the number of courses and so forth, and that's actively going on, but we're making very good progress. The. Impact bargaining, I can say that both the impact bargaining that is going on. With JR SSA, which is the Support Staff Association. And the JREA, which is the Teacher Association, both of them have begun. We've had an introduction session to the JREA one. And we have meetings scheduled for tomorrow. And possibly the next day. And for JR SSA, we had an introductory meeting this past Friday and we had our next meeting. The second meeting we had at one o'clock this afternoon. And so we have some things that we're going back and we're working on, getting different types of documents or suggestions to. You know, put forward as. As ideas of of impact around working conditions. So that's that's ongoing and I can, I expect it to continue to ongo and to go on for at least through this week. The increasing communications. We're going to, we're in a timeframe much like in March. When in April and May, when we were trying to communicate more and more and more. Because things are changing all the time. And so we want to make sure that people have the latest information. So we're going to be dedicated to continue to increase that communication. And to let people know of any changes that occur. We have an obligation, we talked about last time with the framework when it was approved. That this framework was a draft. And that if there is other data, other science, other. Rationale that is compelling us to move in a slightly different direction. Then that was something that we needed to do as well. So we continue to. Look at various aspects of this framework to see if they're still current, if they're still best practice and so forth. You can continue on, yeah. Yeah, and you can go to the next one, because I talked about that. Okay, so a couple of items that are. That we want to talk about tonight and that I'm going to ask for the board to take some action on is one. The calendar. Last time we did move the board, you know, did move the first date of the calendar to. For students to the tenth of September. After Labor Day, after voting and so forth. But they, we didn't make any other adjustments to the calendar. So with the professional development starting this week, because that was what the original calendar that was adopted said. And we did not make any changes to that. We needed to make certain that as we go into impact bargaining, we had a concrete document that. We could all work from from a timetable as well. And so tonight, later on the agenda, there's a suggested calendar. This calendar was constructed with both JR SSA and JREA in mind. Their contracts are different, their needs are different, and so balancing both of them within the same calendar. Was important for us to be able to consider. So that's something that hopefully by the end of this evening, if we have a direction with that, we'll be able to communicate. That does not necessarily mean. That that ends ends it all. Through the idea of impact bargaining, there could be some other adjustments, perhaps not major adjustments, but you know, some tweaks here and there. This past week, there were some questions, well, in on August third, there were some questions around. When are we going to shut school down if there's a outbreak or? Do we shut down classrooms? Do we just have individuals leave? And so all of that is continuing to. All of that was continuing to to change basically as we go along. So we find out better practices about what, you know, what we want to do. That being said. The DHHS or the DPHS. Has come out and said, and this is what we actually had indicated on August third, that we would be in touch with them. To make sure that we're making the best decisions and that we would take their advice on the decisions going forward. They actually came out very strong this past week and indicated that they were going to do all contact tracing for the entire state. That's significant. That means if we do have a positive case, we let this organization know about that positive case. They do the research on who are the individuals this that were around that person. The guidelines basically for people who would be perhaps subject to quarantine if there was a case to break out. Would be that they would have needed to have been with in the presence of the infected individual. For at least ten minutes and in close proximity, meaning not social distance. So. The ideas to, of course, lessen the movement across, you know, from person to person to person and having, you want cohorts together as much as possible. But even within a cohort, it's possible that an individual who's infected wasn't exactly. In close contact with someone for ten minutes or more. So we'll continue to get guidance from DHHS. Make sure that we communicate the up-to-date guidance with that so that people know exactly what the plans are. As we move forward, but we're excited that they are taking on that responsibility. And so it goes along with what our framework states about communicating with them and then being able to communicate with parents. Later on that evening that is or as fast as we possibly can in order to let people know what's happening. The. Other, you know, other areas of interest that came about of change, if we go back to that one right there. I get briefed, I get lots of emails, I get briefed on a wide array of topics and certainly from different organizations. Before, when we made the framework, we had, we were using documents that all pretty much aligned with one another. Around the area of masks. If you go on to the websites having to do with with DHHS. Department of Health and Human Services, the Nurses Association, the. I lost my train of thought, the. Yeah, thank you. The acronym was good, it was losing, the CDC and so forth. They do actually have some differences now and some things to consider. And so when, you know, certainly there were some articles in the local paper about the Nurses Association and. Some of that we we look through, we look at the Nurses Association or say the New Hampshire. School Nurses Association is to be specific. And so the New Hampshire School Nurses Association has put out some best practices and best practices that have been. Also supported by the Department of Health and Human Services. Dr. Chan has looked over these as well and given some guidance. And so the Nurses Association had some areas in it that read differently than what the CDC had read. In the area of mask wearing. And so it's important that from the beginning, we were looking at the best practice of. Wearing masks, not wearing masks, or when to wear masks and all of that whole conversation. We had quite a bit of a conversation and there was. You know, comments and and research on both sides. And so that's great when we have some disagreement on some things. It's good to be able to talk some things out and to be able to ask questions and so forth. So as I was reading through the document, I saw that, for instance, there was a statement that said. Masks, this is in the Nurses Association, which our nurses are a part of. Mask cloth face coverings should be worn by all staff, students and visitors throughout the school day and while traveling on school buses. So a lot of that we have in there about the traveling on school buses and and through portions of our day when we we have in our current framework, when social distancing is not in place or can't be in place, and that's still, if if social distancing can't be in place, then absolutely, no matter where we are at, we have, we need to have our masks. The question or the conversation is, all right, did they mean, what did they mean by that? So we called and emailed the president of the New Hampshire School Nurses Association to find out exactly what it is that they are suggesting that we we do. And they did email us back and indicated that, yes, quote, "The Nurses Association believes that masks should be mandatory. It is the one mitigation strategy that all schools could implement to its fullest, especially considering that not all mitigation strategies are easy to implement to their fullest." So with this in mind, and with the growing, you know, documentation that, well, there's, there's multiple things, growing documentation that when, if there is going to be any transmission of a virus, that it's likely to happen indoors, not outdoors, also that that the, our PRIMEX, which is our group that we work through with professional development and so forth, also supports this notion with with its professional development. And the idea that we want to make certain that we are protecting everyone to the fullest. I am looking for, at the, I'm looking for a conversation first and foremost tonight about putting, changing our framework, so that we would have it, that mask would be worn in the school setting at all times, apart from the fact of having mask breaks, and that the social distancing aspect, that part of it would be that they'd be worn, you know, inside the buildings, outside would be a different story, unless, of course, social distancing was not allowed, and that's, that's still in place, that was in place anyway. I believe that this is a responsible, not a, not an easy thing to certainly put forward after having all of our conversations that we had. But we did indicate that the framework will, is malleable, and that we need to look at this as a possible change. I think that we should tonight take some action on this topic. And based upon the fact that the people who are the local experts in New Hampshire, certainly they're guided by national experts as well, are recommending this, that our nurses, in particular in this area of the mask wearing and so forth, you know, want to make certain that they can provide the best possible care for our students and giving one more mitigation strategy to help with their job and to help protect everyone, I think is something that we can do and should do. With that being said, the district needs to commit to making sure that we have adequate outdoor education opportunities. So what have we done to make sure that happens? First of all, all the administrators have identified areas around their school that could be used for outdoor classrooms. We are in the process of securing the appropriate tents for those areas. We had, certainly there are a couple of different ways you can do that, you can purchase them or you can rent them, and so we might talk about that later on tonight. Also with conversations with the bus company and understand that everything that's going on affects the food service company, the bus company. And so as we go forward, the bus company indicated today, and we still have more, I guess you can call it negotiations to take place, but indicated today that they would be working with us to make sure that on the days that we have school in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, that they would have availability to help transport people or students to outdoor locations, local areas, field trips in the local area, so that if you're focusing on environmental learning, you want to go to a place to do a science unit or anything of that nature, that that can take place in the local area, and so that those buses are able to do that for us. And so we are, we need to solidify that, but both the outdoor classrooms and the ability to transport students and off to areas outside is becoming more and more a reality, and we're excited about those opportunities. And so when we talk about next steps, well, we've got to look at adopting a calendar. Again, once you adopt a calendar and you have something that you can go from, then we can start to have more conversation about what might, what might be able to change around professional development, student days, and so forth. Reviewing the mask policy, that's something that I think we need to do, we need to have a conversation about. And it's when you, when you think about the fact that you go into your local stores and they make you wear masks all the time, even when you're not social distancing, and yet we're, and the governor just put a executive order mandating that masks are worn when you have groups of 100 people and so forth, and we're putting a school together with 200 people, 300 people, 400 people, 500 people. They may not be all in the same room, but it follows the same logic, logical pattern. And I think that we would be, we would be prudent to follow the the pattern of thinking there. The, all the schools are finalizing their plans and their schedules right now. I have drafts of their COVID-19 plans, and so they're, they have not been brought forward here yet because they're still in draft mode, and I just got them, some of them emailed to me a little while ago, but they get into specifics around safety. We need a complete impact bargaining. That's part of this and all intertwined. The outdoor learning I've talked about. We need to communicate with families relative to the bus schedules and so forth, certainly as a result of all of the work that we've been doing and trying to make sure that we have the bus drivers we need, and we have to make sure that after our buses drop students off, that those buses are sanitized or disinfected. It takes time to do that. And so we, and we also need to make sure that at our elementary schools in particular in the morning, that we have a little bit of a difference between all those parents who are going to be dropping their students off and the buses arriving. So we will communicate a 15-minute difference there to make certain that the moment those middle school, high school students get off those buses, we're in there sanitizing those buses, so that then they can leave to go and do their elementary runs. And then it kind of flips in the, in the afternoon. So that all has to be communicated along with any other changes that we make. And then, of course, continued professional development and planning for all staff. We have, you know, we pushed the time off for a good reason, and we are working at a pretty intense pace, and we'll continue that pace moving forward. And that's what I have for tonight for the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Ruben. Right, so next up, we have the public comments, and so Nick, if you would, can you share the policy that governs that? And then also explain how people can communicate? Right, so John McCarthy asked, is there going to be a time limit? And according to our policy, I believe it says 15 minutes, and that's what we're going to hold it to.
Okay, and can I ask just one other question, Marcia?
Sure.
Can you tell us what the process for our discussion might be, or do you want to leave that till afterwards?
That's, Nick's just about to do that. He's going to read the policy and then also talk about that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks.
All right, just got to get a couple of windows out of the way, so I can read it all the way for you guys. So again, we're referring to our school board policy, BEDH, which is Public Participation at School Board Meetings. So you can read it right here, but I'll also read it out loud for everyone. All right, so the board encourages citizens of the district to attend its sessions so that they may become better acquainted with the operation and programs of the schools, and so that the board may have opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and public. However, the board reserves the right to meet and adjourn or recess a meeting at any time to discuss such matters are properly considered a non-public session in accordance with 91A. In order to assure that persons who wish to appear before the board may be heard, and at the same time, it may conduct its meetings properly and efficiently, the board adopts as policy the following procedures. So as said, first 15 minutes will be set aside to address the board. Obviously, we moved that back a little bit just to hear the superintendent's presentation. Any individual desiring to speak shall give his or her name, address, and the group, if any, that is represented. The presentation should be as brief as possible, written remarks are always encouraged. Speakers may offer comments such as school oper, on such school operations and programs as concerns them. In public session, however, the board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor complaints against any person connected with the school system. Other channels are provided for board consideration and disposition of legitimate complaints involving individuals, which show, should be referred to the superintendent for appropriate action. Except as otherwise provided in this policy, members of the public may offer comments on agenda items or upon any matter of public concern directly relating to school district policies, programs, and operations. In the interest of preserving individual privacy and due process rights, the board requests that comments, including complaints regarding individual employees other than the superintendent or individual students, be directed to the superintendent in accordance with the complaint. Complaints regarding the superintendent may be directed to the school board chair. Any comments which do not adhere to the above or which disrupt the official business of the board may be ruled out of order by the chair. Repeat disruption may be, may result in the individuals being asked to leave the meeting. Obscene speech, comments threatening bodily harm, or other unprotected speech will not be tolerated. The board chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow the above rules of order. Repeated violations or disruptions may result in the intervention of law enforcement with the potential for criminal charges. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Thus, in most instances, any board response will be deferred pending consideration by the full board. With the aim of maintaining focus on the issues and discussion, it is desired that all speakers strive to adhere to ordinary norms of decorum and civility. So as normal, we do have three ways in which you can make a comment. Through the attendees tab, you may raise your hand. What that will allow us to do is to see that you have something to say. We can then work to unmute you, you can verbalize your comment. You have the Zoom webinar chat feature. We did change this up a little bit from the last meeting. All questions or comments will be directed to the board as opposed to just in general. So that way, we can hopefully try to filter some of the actual questions and things that people want on the record so that we can acknowledge those. The third way would be if you wanted to send a text message to 603-933-0973. That text message would go straight to me, and then I could, you know, say it out loud, which I would also do with chat messages. Now, one thing that I do really want to stress in that from the policy is that we, in any case, whether you are actually chatting, you know, saying something out loud through raising your hand, or if we are acknowledging a chat or a text, please include first, last name, address, so that we can make that, you know, a more official record of this meeting. And again, just to address it as a point, and I guess order. So this is a, you know, a school board meeting. It's, I guess in some ways, we view it as kind of a fishbowl of sorts, in which people are able to observe the meeting. We give a public comment session so that people can, you know, put information out there, comments, things like that. When it comes to things like questions, it's kind of addressed at the bottom of that policy. A question will not always be addressed right there at the meeting. For example, one thing that we did do between this meeting and last is we did compile all questions that were raised, both through emails, anything said at the last board meeting, and we are working on putting them in a frequently asked questions section on our website. I'll show you real quick just how to get to that, and then we can get on the public comment portion of the meeting. And again, this isn't eating into the 15 minutes. So up here on the top of the website, sau47.org, you have a red section that has some information, you can click on that, and that's going to bring you to all of our communication that we've released so far regarding, you know, communication since March. And we have it broken down into resources, district-wide, we have, you know, various schools. But if you go to the frequently asked questions portion right here, you will see that we have a, I think we have approximately 30 of those questions answered already. There's a handful more of them that will be addressed in the Remote Learning Handbook. If that gets some sort of approval, we're happy to move those questions over to here. And as Ruben had said earlier, we are working on talking with our nurses about some of the health-related questions so that we can get, you know, some supported answers. I have recently received some answers to some questions, and we'll work on also getting those up. So unless Marcia has anything else to say, we can start.
Yeah, there's just, I wanted to underscore a few things that you said. The first one being that this is a board meeting in public, it's not a hearing. Also, thank you for mentioning the frequently asked questions, there's a lot of questions or answers there, and more will be coming. Also, just a reminder that the chat is communication to the board. It's not crosstalk for people that are attending or observing the meeting. Also, that comments are not personal. And I think that's it. Okay, so I'm going to start the 15 minutes. Sure, we have a person in the audience, and I'll ask if they have a comment first.
But let's just take that into, and also, the governor's order, he very clearly reads out that it's the middle of five schools, but he also says, you know, one minute six feet apart. But go into two of those places. So just pouring right about, because, I mean, I know, you know, we have our own daughter, this is going to be a great history. It's like, the way our guys all day long. The first time she wore a mask at the Walmart was probably a month or two before Walmart acquired them, and she wanted to wear it all. So it's absolutely, you wear it all, and she got out and she went to the office and said, I don't wear no names again, but she's so known, why didn't I meet that? So it's, it's, you know. So it's, it's, you know, and I know that she's a very well paid child, but I'm kidding. It's just like, consider that, you know, it loses effectiveness, it's further than
Right, I thought it just landed. What's your answer?
Maunu, and then you, then you.
Okay, sorry about that. So it was Caleb Maunu from Ridge, and he stated that we need to consider developmentally how we might require or request masks and and how if people are asked to wear it all the time, is it going to lose some of its impact in terms of their following the guidelines, following the requests? And that also, it's a lot for a teacher to manage. Did I capture that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So what we're going to do now is we'll start with, we'll start with the people that have their hands raised, just so that if people are, you know, sending in messages, we can just kind of catalog those and read those at the end. So we have four people right now. First, we'll do Carrie Swift.
Can you hear me?
Can we all? Yes, we can.
Thanks. So, good evening. My name is Carrie Swift, 18 Crestview Drive in Jaffrey. I'm a parent of three district students, and I am the music teacher at Conan High School. And I'd like to speak a little bit regarding masks in the classroom, specifically as it relates to music, as I have a little bit, have some expertise there. So I know we're obviously talking about that again, and I'd like to say that I am in agreement with Ruben's proposal to require masks basically at all times indoors. The National Federation of State High School Associations just released some preliminary results of a study that they did on COVID spread as it pertains to music and other arts activities. You may be aware that the act of singing has been a topic of conversation as far as increased potential for spread of disease. And there have been some instances of choir rehearsals being super-spreader events for COVID-19. So to keep it short, the study found that the act of singing and also playing an instrument released more aerosols than simply sitting like a student normally would in class. For this reason, the study recommended, among other things, having students masked as well as socially distanced while singing and playing their instruments to make these activities safer. The study also looked at theater activities such as monologues and found an increase in aerosols over just regular speaking in that activity as well. While it's not a direct comparison, speaking in a theater monologue is similar to the way a teacher or a student would address a classroom in order to be heard by the whole room, especially for all distancing six feet apart. So given the study and the recommendations of the Nurses Association and a variety of other factors, I am in agreement with the wearing of masks at all times. I would much rather that we err on the side of caution. We may end up that we're being overly cautious, but as a teacher, and a parent very much cares for my kids, obviously, and I very much care for our students and my colleagues. I'd much rather we do too much to protect our students than that we do too little. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right. So next we have Michelle Como.
Hello, thank you. My name is Michelle Como. I live at 137 Hunt Hill Road in Ridge. I'm actually a parent of a child in the district, and I'm with other parents socially distanced watching Zoom. And we were, it's a type of a question, but I'm going to try to say it as a statement. Recess for younger students with masks may be difficult. Is there any way you can address that tonight?
Thank you, Michelle. Michelle, I don't believe we're going to be addressing necessarily that tonight, but we will put things in FAQs, so check that.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Cory.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Cory Manley, I am from Jaffrey, a parent. I'll try to be really quick. There's just a couple of things I wanted to touch upon. I know in Ruben's presentation, he had mentioned communication. I'm just going to give some constructive criticism, and that would be that perhaps these meetings could be better organized, maybe address some of the more pressing issues at first. I'm not saying school safety, that kind of stuff, that's certainly important, but we're all waiting to get some more information, and to be honest, I don't feel like I know any more than I did the last time we met. It's, I'm just wondering, and I know everybody's got a tough job of trying to get these plans in place. I'm just wondering when we're going to get some concrete information. Like myself, I'm sure there are a lot of other working parents out there. I've decided to keep my son home, but I have a job, my husband has a job, and I do need to do some planning. I don't know what the remote teaching is going to look like. I don't know if that's going to be a strict schedule that the kids have to follow, or if it's going to kind of be like it was in the spring. And like, for example, I just saw something on investigating connections to make sure that everybody who does things remotely is able to gain access to the school system. So if that has to take place, I'm just wondering when all this stuff is going to happen? When, when are we going to have a concrete plan? So I'm kind of not, I'm kind of bunching, lumping a bunch of stuff in there, and then I, as much as I know that there's a debate between mask, no mask, I think we kind of have to move beyond that at this point. And you guys can figure out the details of that, but I'm not trying to discredit anybody's concern about the mask-wearing. I think it's important. I just think right now, it's just, it's a debate right now, and I think we just need to focus on a plan and executing a plan. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
All right. So we are at a point where we are done with raised hands. We do have one more person in our audience that would like to speak, and then we'll get to reading the it'll, yeah, the audience isn't going to, the digital audience won't hear it either way, so.
So we just heard from Sherry Mamu of Ridge, and she was expressing concern. She is a first grader. And how will, when the first few years, when students are learning to read rather than reading to learn, that it's a lot of mimicking, it's seeing the expression in the facial facial expressions of teachers and mimicking that. And I can quickly tell you that earlier in Ruben's report, he talked about some of the things that we're looking at with facilities. And that is certainly something that we've been talking about in terms of for our teachers having the clear, so that that will happen to them.
All right, so at this point. Okay. So we do have, we do have a number, we have three people who have reached out via text. I have probably a dozen comments. Do we want to read those out loud and have that be the end of it? Or do we want to just note that they have been reported as a part of the official record? Then we will, okay. So what we can do is, anybody who has yep. Yeah, so what we can do is, so any, again, if you've put a public comment into the chat feature, just really try to make sure that you have your first, last name and your town of residence in there so that we can have it be a part of the official record. What we're going to do, just to, you know, move on to the next, you know, bit in conversation, these chats end up recording automatically at the end of a meeting. So what we can do is we can take these, we can catalog them as part of the minutes as an official record with your statement. Any question that is going to be in there can be something that we can add into that frequently asked question section that we are developing, because obviously, we are, you know, adding continually as we can. So just expect there to be more questions down the road in that section of the website. There is a portion that says the last date it was updated on, so we'll make sure that we continue to update that so that you can see. And the newer questions will appear up top. So again, we will, we will take all these public comments into consideration. And there is a second public comment section at the end of the meeting for people who wish to speak again. We'll give another period. So, yeah, we can continue.
Okay, thanks, Nick. All right, so we said we wanted to have time for discussion, Board, on things that Ruben presented and the action, things that he suggested. So are there Board members that would like to comment or have questions? John McCarthy?
Let me not press your space bar, that will unmute.
I just did unmute. Okay, I think that this is a very important decision for us, and a difficult one, too. And some of the comments that have been made, I think, are very good comments. How we're going to work with our youngest children. It's not going to be easy, but one thing, I think we have to have a lot of confidence in our elementary educators. I think they're very good, and they're going to find ways to work with our students. And if, if they feel they can't, I think they're going to tell us, too. So I have a lot of confidence in them. You know, this is maybe neither here nor there, but I, there's been so much confusion about this pandemic and how serious it is. But I think we believe very firmly that it's very serious. We've seen the numbers of deaths around the country, and we see major enterprises like the National Basketball Association, the Major League Baseball, these enormous businesses that have shut down their seasons. And they only do things like that because they know how serious it is. They believe the science. And, you know, we're in a time when there's so much uncertainty, people are hearing so many different things, but I think, you know, speaking for myself, this is a very serious thing. We care about our children. And even though we know that it's not as serious in some ways for younger people, the more data comes out, the more we're hearing that even very young children can suffer some very serious consequences from this disease. And although the percentage of deaths has been somewhat low for children and for young teens, it's still way too high for us to want to take a chance. And I know that the administration and the superintendent has been struggling with this. It's not an easy decision. And, you know, I have to say, I support it.
Other Board members?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John, for sharing that. I totally agree that this is so serious, and this is a very, I'm struggling a lot with this topic, especially when it comes to our elementary learners. And you all know, that's the population that I am strongly connected to, and I do my best to represent them. I've also had a lot of conversations with parents and families in our district who based their decision to send their children back to in-person services on, with the understanding that in elementary school, children would not be asked to wear masks for the whole entire day. And I understand that we need to be flexible and that our plan needs to evolve along the way. But I, I am concerned about what that means for our learners. And it's hard for me to fully support that because I really don't have a good picture of what it looks like and how it supports elementary development and everything that we know about children in that developmental period of time. So I guess for me, I really, I wish I knew more what, what that would look like for them. You know, how are mask breaks going to happen? How are children going to be taught the rules and the boundaries and the expectations around wearing masks? And if they can't, what is, what is, what's going to happen then? So I just, I need, I need more information. I need to know what that's going to look like. And I think that there are a lot of other families that feel the same way as well.
Thanks, Alicia. And Charlie?
Yeah, I'm going to say something that's not exactly on topic before I get to topic. I'll tell you, I'm concerned. All right, we have three weeks and two days before we are planning on having students come through the door. And there's a lot of unanswered questions. Now, we left off after doing several months of remote learning. And from my perspective, we know how to do it. We should, if we, if we can't deliver the answers to these questions and start up, you know, in three weeks, then I think that we should go back to remote learning until we've got the answer. Having said that, talking about masks, there's a lot of information that's coming out now that hasn't been out before. And it has to do with long-term effects. And it has to do with long-term effects of the COVID virus and the impact that it has other than when the symptoms go away. So, you know, people think that gee, my symptoms are gone, I've recovered, but they're discovering more and more that there are long-term effects on your body, including cardiac inflammation, blood clots, damage to the heart is more common than they thought. A lot of it's irreversible. And that's a high risk when I'm talking about children. And on Friday, the state announced that they had 17 new cases, 12 more children. We have 146 children in the state of New Hampshire, ages zero to nine, that have COVID, have had COVID, active cases. We have 331, ages 10 to 19. That's 7% of the people in New Hampshire who had COVID are all children under the age of 19. And you say, well, that's not very many. But to me, that's an awful lot. If you, if you have one of them, they're here in Jeffrey Ridge. Because I don't know which parent I'm going to explain to that, you know, I allowed that student to get COVID simply because they didn't wear a mask. So from my perspective, I really feel it's important that we follow the guidelines as best we can and we make it safety first and a very safe environment for our students as best we can. So I'm definitely in favor of supporting the current guidance around face masks.
Thanks, Charlie. Other comments? Yes, Heidi?
I appreciate what everyone has said so far. This is not an easy task for any of us. We know it's, it's, you know, just difficult for this community because there's so many different feelings about it. But I agree with what Charlie said specifically about how do we live with the fact that somebody might get this disease? And I'd like to include all of the adults who are working, not just the children. But how do we know that when one case comes in here, it doesn't end up being one of those horrible cases where someone either dies or has some serious long-term illness and effects from this disease? And so I think we also need to do whatever we possibly can to protect everyone.
Thanks, Heidi. Anyone else?
Well, I will chime in here and say that I agree, I don't know if it's possible, but I agree with everything that's been said. I understand the developmental part and how difficult that is and the impact of that and the onus that it puts on teachers to monitor that. But I also know that from my own experience with, with grandchildren, that they are doing it. And they have, you know, adapted to it. And when they were visiting this summer, you know, if we were going anywhere, they grabbed their mask without being told and they had it on. And I don't think I would really want to feel responsible for anyone, you know, having an illness, let alone long-term implications. So those are my thoughts. So our superintendent asked for an action. I don't know if someone has a proposal. Laurel, you. Okay, so, sorry, you're muted, so people aren't.
So better. Okay, so I move that we authorize the superintendent to modify the framework to migrate from masks in building and school grounds with social distancing six feet or more is not possible to masks in the buildings at all times. And we requested this superintendent develop a program to allow students to have mask breaks. The framework regarding masks on school grounds outside of the buildings will remain unchanged.
Okay. Thank you. I want to make sure I have this correct, though. Modify the framework to go from masks only when social distancing is not possible within the building to wearing masks all the time in the building, to build in mask breaks so that there are times that it's not nonstop, kids get a break from wearing masks, and that the mask outside part of the framework stay as is. Okay, thank you, Laurel. And that was seconded by John. Okay. And I'm going to do a roll call vote. But a lot of people aren't. I was just going to do it. Don't have to, but. Okay. Laurel? Thank you. John, Charlie? Thank you. John? Thank you. Heidi? Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. Alicia? Okay, Alicia, no, thank you. And I vote yes. So it passes 6-1-0.
I think it might have come in before Marcia repeated it, but I'll still repeat it just for the sake of having it official for those digital. So the motion is to modify our district framework to go from masks when not socially distanced inside. The change will be to have it read that masks will be required at all times inside the building. We will still keep the same, only when six feet is not possible for outside locations. And then there was also a suggestion that a program be developed to create regular mask breaks throughout the day for students.
All right. Thank you all. We're moving on to the consent agenda. I think, do we have a modification? Yeah, okay. Hold on, Laurel.
I make a motion to add a nomination for Timothy Robinson to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alicia. All right, so we're pulling the public minutes of August 3rd. And I believe also the minutes from the 29th need to be pulled? I believe both? Because wasn't, that was a special one and there were only, was there only a quorum there? Okay. Any other changes to the consent agenda before we move on? Before we take a vote? Budget transfer? Okay, so there's an addition of a budget transfer of $7,000. Sorry, I missed what it was from and to. Okay, it goes from special education at the elementary to the high school level for professional services. Okay, few changes tonight. Any others? Okay, then I'll do a roll call vote. Laurel? Thank you, Laurel. Charlie? Thank you, Charlie. John? Thank you, John. And Heidi? Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you, Alicia. And I say aye, so that passes 7-0-0. Let's go back now to the 29th. So all right. Thank you, Laurel, for that motion. Thank you, Charlie, for the second. And all those in favor, so starting with Laurel. Charlie? I have to abstain. You say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Patty, were you at the meeting? July 29th?
Oh, no, my apologies.
Okay, so Patty and Alicia, you both are abstaining. Okay, thank you. And that passes. And now, August 3rd. I need, yep.
Okay, just had one item from page three of the minutes relating to the approval of the reopening framework. It says, John McCarthy moved the board accept the 2021 reopening framework. And I made that motion in light of, or on the condition that it's understood as a tentative document and one that would likely change as we answered the questions that had been raised.
Can you just want that section added to the motion at the end?
Correct. So I would move then to approve the minutes of August 3rd as amended.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Heidi. And I'll do roll call again, starting over this side, just to be different. Alicia? Yes.
Aye.
Thank you, Patty, Alicia, Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie? Thank you, Laurel. Thank you. And I say aye, so that passes 7-0-0. Thanks, everyone. All right, next up is action items. And we have calendar, which we've heard importance of, and then several handbooks here. So want to do the calendar? And Ruben?
All right. Thank you. Okay. So the calendar, so shifting the first day to the 10th was something that was done in order to make certain that we could have more time to prepare our schools from the physical plant, both inside and out, as well as to continue to develop plans, as the majority of schools are still in the works of developing plans right now. Because things continue to change and also as numbers pour in with students taking either remote or coming into the full classroom, the different choices and so forth, plans have to continue, or at least the schedules have to continue to adapt accordingly. So when we did that change, we did not adopt any other, like full-blown calendar during that timeframe. So we, this calendar right here shows a difference in both the JRSSA timeframes and the JREA, the Teachers Association, the teachers' days. Both, both contracts have different stipulations as to how many days people work, when they work, how they work, all that kind of stuff. So by solidifying, for now, you know, the time periods, really what this changes is just to get some concrete information to the staff that when, you know, professional development and things like that are taking place. So this calendar has today, for instance, a new teacher workshop, tomorrow, a new teacher workshop, and everything else that's planned already this week to continue. The unencumbered day, just like it was on the 24th before, we left it there for teachers. Certainly, as we go through and talk about things with the association and talk about how best to help support any types of changes through the bargaining process, some of these can probably be adjusted and we can get some quick meetings in to make sure that we can adjust or get some agreements. But that's where we have those, you know, pretty solid right there. Then you'll see on the 25th and the 26th, and actually the 24th, 25th, and 26th. So we've got two different groups, which is why this gets a little bit confusing. When that change gets made, it has a different impact on the hourly staff, the JRSSA, and it does have on the teacher staff. And so again, though there may be some alterations down the road through bargaining, this calendar shows that for the association, the JRSSA, that the 19th, the 20th, the 21st, the 24th, the 25th, and the 26th would be workdays where they would be getting professional development and ready for the upcoming year. Then, and you can see that those are off on the side with the, you know, where it says associate workshop, not teacher, because there are other places where it says teacher but not associate. Then the goal would be to have people coming in, all individuals coming in, the 31st through the 3rd. And so how do we get to these days? Because we do have contractual obligations around the number of days for professional development. And so what these, what we did was we took days that were in March and that were in November for professional development. So for teachers, we took the first professional development day in both November and the first professional development day in March, and we moved those to the beginning of this year on the 31st and the 1st. For the other two days, the For the other two days, the state has permitted us three days of going forward. So it's saying very similar to what happened when we went to remote learning. They recognize that across the state, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, that we can use two of those student days for continuing to get ready for the learning experience this year. And so that's where two of those days are, on the 2nd and the 3rd. Now for JRSSA, in order to make sure that we're also utilized in the same days, it gets a little confusing. They... Their professional development days for March 8th and 9th, and their professional days for the potential ones that they had anyway for November 2nd and 3rd, that's how we got them to be, to have more days upfront. So if we count everything, it works out to be the 186 days for teachers, the 170, well, the 184 I believe days for associates. Doesn't really impact the custodians because they're year-round. We do have the clerical aides and the secretaries that are starting, and the clerical aides are starting, and they have 190-day contract. So there's a lot here, but by passing this, this gives us a place to start from and to give some consistency as to when our teachers and support staff in working, whether it be professional development or whether it be working on developing lessons and so forth for the upcoming year with their counterparts, once the schedules go out to those teachers and knowing where everything is happening. So we have a little bit of lag time, those X's. X's mean that no one apart from SAU and year-round employees are in during that timeframe. Other discussions that can... Sorry? Okay. Other discussions that can take place down the road, you know, involve the difference between hours and days, but as of right now, you know, the board always has the opportunity to make some adjustments later on with the calendar if you feel that there's some other aspects of this calendar that need to be addressed.
Well, I apologize, I might have to get my paper to work. But I have a couple of questions or actually comments. It seems to me this gives you a pretty golden opportunity to really get the training done, the opportunity for the training for ZERN, and also for the learning management system.
It gives us, so the comment was it gives us the opportunity to do some training for ZERN and the learning management system. The learning management system might be a little bit tougher to get in during this time. It is possible that we will be able to toward the latter part of this. ZERN for certain is going to be, there's good time for professional development relative to the mathematics in the elementary.
Patty?
I appreciate seeing this and understanding the breakdown there. I've seen different documents with regard to the facilities and what has had to be done. Tonight, the board used the hand sanitizers, which are new and different, they're fancy, they spray. I think that, and the eye wave and how that's affecting things, I think as the next two weeks go on, it will be helpful to see, you know, the list of things that are getting accomplished. Certainly, all these handbooks have work to do. There's so much more that needs to be done, and I appreciate the fact that teachers understand what focus time is the next three weeks or two weeks. And the flexibility that families have had to adjust to the new schedule, knowing that it's in the student's best interests and the district's best interest, because the facilities are, there's a lot of changes that have had to take place, especially the scheduling, which, you know, we can't just press a button and have it all come out perfect. It's gonna have to get tweaked. So I guess I just want to make a comment that a lot has gone into this. This isn't about just dates and guessing. There's a lot of thought behind it that the administration has put into it, and I appreciate that.
Thanks Patty. Any other comments about the calendar or do we have a motion? Heidi?
I make a motion that we accept this new calendar.
Thank you Heidi. There's been a motion to accept the calendar. I need a second. Alicia, thank you. And roll call vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you Charlie.
Aye.
Thank you John. Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you Heidi. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you Patty. Alicia?
Yes.
And I say aye, so it passes 7-0-0. Thank you very much.
I know that we've just passed this, but I would ask Charlie why. If I could.
I didn't hear.
There was some reluctance, and we're wondering if Charlie has something he would like to say, or are you?
There are some concerns, but I think we'll overcome them.
Okay, so Charlie has some concerns, but he thinks that we will overcome those. Thank you Charlie.
We have a whole host of different handbooks here. I would suggest that maybe we approve the remote learning handbook separately, and then all the others, the staff, and the student handbooks in the ad lib.
Okay, so there's been a suggestion that we accept the handbooks collectively, with the exception of the remote learning one, and that one maybe we should go to next. Right, so the high school ones, this is our first time of those being on the agenda, whereas the elementaries have come to us. Okay.
Okay. So the conversation is to take some of these in different orders, and that the remote learning handbook, which was a task that came out of the framework, that that would be looked at first. I will just make some statements that the remote learning handbook was a collaborative piece of work. Jen Horn, the Director of Student Services, led a team of teachers to develop this for actually elementary and middle and high school. So it puts guidelines, it puts kind of, has different sections about what remote learning would look like or what remote teaching would look like during the days when that happens. So this document's important for the purpose of making certain that there's clarity, both for the parents and the learners, as well as the instructors and the administration. So it's really a tool for all. And I think that the group did a great job. They were even up to today, making some edits here and there to make sure it says what they wanted it to say. So I've gone through it, and believe it's a good piece of, a good document, and so I do encourage us to pass this tonight. As for other handbooks, again, things are changing rapidly all the time. So as the schools work on their, I guess you could call it COVID-19 handbooks that they're putting together, and they're pretty much, they're very close to completion. You know, if we accepted the handbooks that are like JGS, RMS, CHS, and stuff like that, sometimes those handbooks are made so that they fit a typical situation, and then anything else we add is like an amendment to that or an addendum, depending on how you look at it. And so there might be some practices that are in an elementary handbook, for instance, like I think we looked at one relative to like attendance-taking, you know, but we're also going to be looking at implementing web-to-school for attendance-taking. So that might, you know, just with the understanding that those will have to be updated as the practices change. Yeah, that's important.
Yep, thank you.
I also applaud, I believe, and this was a piece of that concept around the safety MOU that we discussed early on and why this all links together, is that this, if we can exit from the remote handbook and go to the fact that for the first time ever, the JRMS, CHS has a discipline handbook, and that is a wealth of information around the philosophy and approaches that are being taken. And again, that has not been, there has been no such thing in the past. And so I appreciate the work that they've been putting in because it's crucial for this time as well as any time.
Hi, thank you Ruben. So there was a suggestion that we vote on this, the remote learning one, and then on the others.
Practices that we need based upon feedback from the community and things that we need to tweak, then that's something that we need to tweak. So you would adopt it as, with the understanding that as we, just like anything else, as we gain more information, we make good decisions moving forward.
This is like version 1.0 and they like to version 1.1.
Yeah, this is a...
Living document.
Living document, never, we've never had one.
That answer your questions Laurel?
Ruben, what would be the, I guess I'm wondering what would be the practical effect if we delayed approval of the remote learning handbook until next time so that we could, you know, read through it or have a chance to make comments? Would that...
Sure, well, the practical effect is as we go through this timeframe, part of what we put in the framework was to develop certain plans. And so the remote learning framework, the administration felt was one of the priority plans that needed to get done as soon as we possibly could. And so it was collaboratively developed, it was put together. It is a tool that can be bargained over with impact bargaining, so it's important for the, well, actually both associations are impacted by remote learning, so those individuals who are doing that, you know, there might be some content that we need to talk about. So if we don't have that, it makes it a little bit more difficult. So for instance, tonight, we also have, I have some draft COVID-19 handbooks. You know, I'll put those out in draft form for the associations to read over. You will not have approved them yet, but they'll have, the idea of it will be out there so that we can continue to have our conversations with the associations in the bargain in good That's the main reason to do it. If not, I'll still pass that along to the organizations and we'll go with it as though it is likely to be passed with maybe minor modifications.
Just as a practical question, if we approve it tonight and then impact bargaining, there's a need to make changes, won't you have to bring it back or how would that work?
Well, you don't bargain impact unless you have something that has impacted the situation. So when you, as a board, approve a framework, there are items in that framework now, because the board deals with, you make the policy, you decide the calendar, all those kinds of things, you make those decisions. Once those decisions are made, they might have an impact on working conditions or other things. And so that's what impact bargaining is, you gotta bargain on something that actually
Okay.
Yep.
Also, John, I would suggest that we move forward as much as we can, because there's a lot of open-ended things that we don't have answers for right now, and the more we can put in the category of having answers, the better off we're gonna be.
And I think Laurel's question was around modifications as needed. So if needed, we would modify it so it worked better.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If something, I mean, there's two ways, right? One is just good practice based upon data and finding out that we're two weeks into a program, I guess you could say, and then finding out from our constituencies that it's not working the way it needs to, and so we gotta tweak it. That's perfectly, that's one avenue. The other avenue, as you suggested, is if we go through impact bargaining and that actually actually changes certain things, yes, we can always go back, we explain why those changes are made, and then the board approves those changes. Yeah. Because anything that gets bargained through an impact process, the board has to approve anyway, because it's a board bargaining.
So I'm back to looking for a motion on either.
So I'm hoping we approve the remote learning handbook. No one, it's a work in progress.
Okay, thank you Charlie. Thank you Laurel for the second. And roll call vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you John?
Thank you.
Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you Patty?
Aye.
Thank you Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you, and I say aye, so that passes 7-0-0. How about the other handbooks?
These handbooks are presented with the understanding that they present operations not under COVID.
Right, these handbooks are the standard handbooks, and there's still the addendum or memorandum of around COVID. Yes.
And that any plans or COVID plans or framework that conflict with these handbooks, the COVID plan or the COVID framework supersede.
Yes, the COVID handbook, if there's something in direct conflict in the standard handbook versus the COVID, at times of pandemic, the COVID one would supersede. Any other questions before we get a motion? They don't have to be done individually, they can be done collectively?
You can set by motion to accept all remaining handbooks on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all of the remaining handbooks on the agenda with a shout-out. Great job on the discipline handbook, I'm really excited about that.
All right, thank you Alicia for the motion. All right, thank you, Alicia, for the motion. Heidi had her hand up first. Heidi, thank you. And roll call vote, starting with Laurel.
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie.
Aye.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you, Patty.
Aye.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
And I say aye, so that passes 700. And thank you to everyone who worked on those. Okay, we're on to the committee updates. Education committee. Charlie, you want to give us a quick rundown of our meeting?
Yeah, but before I do, I'd like to say something. And that, and that is, I got a hackle, so it's hard for me to talk and listen. I just want to say that our administrators and our teachers and our students and all of us, I use that, and especially our superintendent have been working their butts off. If I had a word to describe, I would say relentless. They have put in more hours and covered more ground with more things than I've ever seen before. And I just want to compliment them by saying that they're doing a miraculous job. And it's, it's going to take a miraculous job to get us where we need to go. Okay, as far as the education committee, we opened with a reopening update, which by now has been superseded by the superintendent just told us. We also had happening in a summer curriculum work, and in particular, the writing and math. And we saw example of progressions with the Khan statement. And we're also providing an up, the update on Otis and the LMS system. And let's see. We're loading in the history and setting up our teachers and we're ready to schedule. That's what I have.
Thanks, Charlie. Any questions for Charlie or anyone else on the education committee? All right then, Laurel? Facilities? Do you want to?
Did I report out the last meeting?
Yeah, I, I, well, but you had, there was another meeting.
He wanted to use my computer? Am I muted?
I just pressed. Press, just press that down, the spacebar and hold it.
Yep, I just keep holding it. So facilities committee has been meeting more frequently than usual, understandably. Most focusing on items that will get the schools open. We received a report today that the IWA installation will be complete on, at RMS on Wednesday. That is the last school that is receiving the air purification in all of the air handling units. And we have discussed requesting the contractor, Bergeron, to follow up with air quality monitoring in all of the rooms to assess the impact of that. And items that are more forward planning, for example, the CIP, have been put on the back burner until we have our arms around what we need to do to be open for students and staff. Questions?
So I noticed that you've been poking around some of the fields and looking at the different changes or upgrades that might possibly be made, not only relating to parking, but just to the outside areas, you know, owned by the district. Is there anything you can tell us about that?
We intend to propose some upgrades to our athletic and field facilities for the voters. A rebuild of the RMS field. It would involve removing the backstop and bases because the grade does not work, but completely rehabilitating a soccer field. So I think it would be a much nicer facility for the students and the community. And here at the middle school, high school, we are looking at improving the recess area for the middle school in what I think we're calling the Cardinal Courtyard, and having an assessment done of the best use for the larger fields. It appears that with some fairly minor civil work, we could have a functioning baseball diamond and soccer field, but we need to have an assessment done.
Thank you, Laurel. And we're up to public comments two. And we'll do, I'll set 15 minutes. And same way, you can raise your hand. You can text. Yes, yes.
All right, so again, we're in public comment session number two. So three ways for your voice to be heard. Number one is that you would raise your hand, as I see one person already has. What you would do is, you know, raise your hand through the participants window. I would address you, give you the ability to speak. You could text 603-933-0973, or you could use the chat window. And again, just kind of trying to follow the, the process that we had before. Because we have received a bunch more, you know, people saying things throughout the meeting. Anything that comes in as a text message, anything that comes in as a chat, we will categorize that. We will include that as a part of the record. Questions, you know, we'll go to the frequently asked question portion and we will work on answering those. So again, we're going to open it up and please, no matter what, first and last name and residence, please. So first, we have Julie Samantha.
That's a lot of feedback.
All right, try that, is that a little better for you?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
All right, yep, Julie Samantha, Ridge, New Hampshire, here. Two kids, Ridge Memorial and the middle school. And your decision tonight to change to all masks all the time really makes me have to question the survey commitment form I filled out. Are you going to now send out another commitment form with this updated information? If not, can you guys at least update the fact section to better understand what is a mask break? How many are there? Where will they be? We don't, how many times a day? Do the kids have to leave the classroom? Are they going outside for a mask break? There's a lot of questions that came up just with this decision. So I hope that you'll send out another survey so people can reevaluate their commitment.
All right, it was Julie Samantha. Julie?
Thank you for your input, Julie.
I was just, I'm Marcia saying thank you for your comment. All right, so next we have Maxwell McCarell.
Hello, it's actually Kristy McCarell, sorry about that, didn't change the name. I'm at 64, I'm at 64 Fitch Road in Jeffrey. I have two children that will be attending JGS. My question is how the district is preparing to handle SEL? And if you guys are going to implement that, I'm just curious about it. I haven't heard much about it.
Yeah, so I just got word that we will address that in the near future in the FAQs. Could you just give me the spelling of your first name, please?
Sure, it's on C-R-I-S-T-Y.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's, that's what we have right now for hands raised. Do we want to give a couple of minutes just for anybody? We did get one more. All right, so we got one more person. I guess just real quick, if anybody wants, you know, to say anything actually verbally, you know, just try to line up in those, you know, hands raised. And then again, like we said, any, any comment that has been written into us, we will include as a part of the record. Obviously, we'll read it, we'll pull out the questions. So Cory?
Okay, Cory Manley, Jeffrey, parents, again. I just wanted, wondered if you could give some more clarification to the remote learning handbook. I certainly don't know the process involved to get things approved. But am I understanding correctly that that just got approved without anybody reading it? Without any members of the board reading it? And isn't this a large part of our, part of the pie? Have staff and teachers read it? Do they know what they're going back to yet? I just think that sometimes when stuff gets handled in the appropriate manner, we're kind of backtracking. So that was my question, was just getting some clarification on that remote learning handbook. I, and I could be wrong, I got the impression that you all passed it, but nobody really read it. And again, I, I could be totally wrong.
So
You can do it.
So Cory, we, we get the agenda and the supporting materials in advance so that we can do just that.
Yeah, the, the agenda is sent to the board on either Thursday or Friday. All documents, or at least the vast majority of them, are attached at that point. So the board has had the weekend to review that document.
Can I just tell them, Cory, what we get is these are, most of these are not new manuals. And what we get is we get documentation on each manual of the changes that were made in the manual. So it's fairly easy to go through the manual and review it because of, we have a list of all the changes and we can review the changes. There are some manuals, like the remote learning handbook, which we have to go cover to cover because we don't have one that exists, so we don't know what changes. So that's typically, it doesn't take us a long time to read the manual because we know what the changes are and all we have to do is review the changes.
Thanks, Charlie.
All right, it looks like that's all we have for people raising their hands. So we do have one person actually in public that would like to make a comment, so.
So the question was from Sheri Mamu of Ridge. And the question was, those who choose to homeschool, will the resources that the school has be available? And I think that was something that we would address into the FAQs as well. Okay?
Which would be at home, all that access would be there. So if they were, if you were teaching them through remote learning, that would happen.
So how do you, do you have a, do they remote learning and not homeschool on your own?
They're very different categories. So, you know, we will, we can answer that because that's, this is a question that's been asked probably two other times today. Similar, so we'll put that in the FAQs. We've got to do a little bit of research to answer some of that question, but for certain, because of, well, a variety of things, one of which is, you know, you can take, like for instance, homeschoolers can take, you know, a class, two classes, three classes, whatever be involved in that sort of process. And then the resources are then provided that way. So I have to, that, that's the way I can, I can answer you right now, that if they were remote learning, you'd, you'd have access. Well, because homeschooling is a withdrawal from the school, it's withdrawing from, from everything. Yeah, yeah. So if there are any people who wanted to homeschool, but were thinking, no, I really want remote learning, like I want my kids home, but for our teachers to teach them through a remote learning process. And you chose to put homeschool down, then yes, getting us that information would be important. And in, to some degree, we'll anticipate that anyway because if someone has said they're going to homeschool, we still need to have the official letters come our way. And so we document all of that.
Thank you. Okay. We're down to about a minute, so.
Yeah, so at this point, we're going to close the second public comment portion. Again, just a reminder, if you put something in chat or in a text message, those will be cataloged. Questions will be separated and put into a pool where we can work on getting some answers to those questions. And then again, things will be part of the record. So thank you for everybody who, you know, participated in chat and text as well.
Okay, any board matters? I just wanted to make the comment that I know we all get the New Hampshire School Board Association emails and stuff, but there's tomorrow, from 6:00 to 7:30, there's a COVID roundtable discussion that might be interesting. So, anyone else, anything?
Just a point on that.
Yep.
Just a point on the NHSBA webinars. I am keeping track of those and anything that's related to my function as a school board secretary or a communications coordinator, I'm taking care of those. So I am monitoring those and if anybody wants the materials from any of those, they do send them out after the meeting, so I can send those.
Great, thanks. Okay, future items, I mean, it says update of technology plan. We did have some tonight, but I guess in the future, there'll be more after the audit.
Totally went through fairly quickly that side of things. And so, yeah, the audit is really, when we have that, then there'll be something more to talk about.
More to talk about, yeah. Okay, great, thank you. All right, that's all that I have on the agenda.
Make a motion that we adjourn, so I can.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. Anyone else? John, all right, thank you. And we are adjourned, thanks.